This conference will now be recorded.
That brings us to the July 27, 2021 Tenino City Council Work Session. I believe all City Council members are present. I see Councilmember Daviston, Lawton, Copeland, O'Callahan, and GoToBack. Thank you all for attending. For the work session, we're going to spend most of it, probably all of it, with a presentation from interim Police Chief John Hutchings. So with no further ado, I'll hand it over to him. This is what he hit, some of the things he's been working on over the last couple of weeks. So Hutch, take it away.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to be respectful of council's time. So I'm not going to read slides to you. That's insulting.
You have 30 minutes. You've got all the time in the world.
Okay. Some of the things we're going to cover, of course, very briefly is going to be application process, the application, the hiring process, meet and greet, and then the eventual steps to hiring. Next, please, Becca. The application, the city's application asks towards the top, are you legally eligible for employment in the United States? And it's not prohibited, but most employers should not ask that per the EEOC, Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, because it could be seen and perceived as discriminatory. But at the bottom, you'll see in compliance with federal law, all persons hired will be required to prove that. They should not be able to, shouldn't be asked to do that until a job offer has been made. So it's not mandated that it not be there, but it's best practice not be there. So it's up to, I would imagine, Council or the mayor to see if that needs to be changed or not before we put it, put it out to the public. Next slide, please. Embassy hiring process. And you know, when we do the announcement, going to be doing outreach, we will be advertising for the position of Police Chief with CJTC, Criminal Justice Training Commission, with WASPIC, the Association of Sheriff's and Police Chiefs, and in a magazine, a professional magazine called Police One. And they have over 1.5 million in circulation, I believe. And that's where most people go to look for jobs for law enforcement. I'm going to put a call into John Walters, the owner of Public Safety Testing, because we did have a retainer with them for some time, for a few years. And I think it was like $500 a year. But I don't know how long it's been, but we don't have that any longer. I'm going to reach out to him tomorrow and see if he can throw us a bone and we can advertise, or at least find out what it would cost if we do advertise with, with Public Safety Testing. Many, many applicants go to Public Safety Testing to get that work done. So it's good for advert. I don't know if we can do that without using their services to do the background and testing and physical agility, all that type of stuff. But hopefully, we're trying to get a lateral police officer as well. And even in light of Seattle PD losing 250 police officers, maybe one of them would like to come down this way and work for a nice, clean town, a nice, clean city. Sorry. City. The application screening, when we receive applications, and there'll be a closing date, and we'll have a screening process or a couple of people looking at these to make sure that the applicants are meeting, they meet at least the minimum requirements. And one of the minimum requirements that we have added is a medical exam. And the medical exam consists of just like an annual physical. It's not a complete blood work and treadmill, not running a mile, but it's basically an annual physical to let us know where the candidate is medically. And I think that's just good sound practice. Interview panel will be consisting of council members, chamber, the school district members, and even perhaps the police department. Maybe four or five people on this interview panel to interview the candidate or candidates, hopefully, and then score them and rank them in order. When we get that narrowed down, and I'm thinking big time, like, we're going to have a few applicants and we get a pair now. And maybe they all go, if there's not that many. There will be a meet and greet with the City Council and/or members of the community. So everybody gets a chance to meet and greet the potential candidate or candidates for the job. And then there will be a conditional offer made. It's conditioned on the background investigation, a polygraph, psychological, and the medical exam. And then after that, then a job offer and swearing in. Next slide, please. I compare, I did a salary survey, as you see there, and with comparable cities of population, the number of officers, and the salary range, the entry level and top step, the first step and top step for Police Chief. And just kind of point out, Winlock and Toledo are kind of outliers because Toledo, a number of years ago, I'm sorry, Winlock, gave their police services to Toledo. So that, that took money from Winlock and gave it to Toledo. So you can see in Toledo, with one officer and 800 population, they started $5,000. Whereas Tenino, 1,800 people, we started $4,400 in a little step. And by the same token, Winlock starts at 1,400. But that's because they just began, their, their police department again, getting certified in their speed just two, two years ago. And so they're getting back, they're getting back on track. It's going to take them a while. But that's why, even though they're in their infant stage, that's why the salary is so low. But you can see McCleary clearly has a comparable number of officers and population, and they started $7,100. And Council Rock, of course, they, they've got a huge population, much bigger. For the heck of it, and at the mayor's request, I also reached out to Olympia, Tomwater, and Yelm. And entry level Police Chief in, yeah, Olympia, entry level Police Chief, he has $15,400 a month. And Tomwater, the entry level Police Chief, bottom step is $12,018 a month. And Yelm is $11,333 a month. So much bigger cities, a much larger police force. And that's why they have a bigger population, more tax base. So they're, they can be able, they're able to afford a much bigger workforce. So one of the things that I'm proposing is to make it attractive to have somebody want to come to the great city of Tenino, is to change that salary step scale. If we did it, for example, just raised it 10%, that's $509 a month, or $6,100 a year roughly. And if we just did it for two months, for example, if we hired someone in November, for November, December, that's, we're only talking about $1,000. If we did a 15% increase in pay, then that would take $670 a month additional, or $8,000 a year for the chief. But I want to be clear to not only City Council, but also with respect to anybody watching, this does not affect me in any way, shape, or form. I'm an interim Police Chief. This does not impact my salary at all, no way, shape, or form. This is doing, I'm proposing this to attract a large number of candidates to the city of Tenino. So we are sitting on some salary savings. I'm not coming to you telling you, please give me more money. We are sitting on some salary savings. And for example, like meals and lodging and travel, we can, I can find money. I can absorb this within our budget for this year. I haven't looked at it extensively to see if we can absorb it for the entire year next year, but we might be able to. But at least for this year, I can absorb it if the city is going to do that at either 10 or 15%. I wait, I wait your sage advice. And you don't have to decide tonight, of course. Chew on this and, but let me know so I can move forward with the announcement. But then I'll be probably looking for some extra money for funding next year, potentially. I say that potentially because you've heard it here. Next slide, please.
Chief, before you move forward on that, I got a question for Wayne. We have a couple of new businesses that have moved in. Is that, is the sales tax and all the taxes that they provide enough to cover or more than cover what's being proposed?
I mean, we, we can look at our sales tax revenue for the year, and it is up. But, you know, like, so, so that's, so that's good. Our, our budget is, is good. And we'll, we'll kind of, I don't, I don't think we're going to be ready to exactly to talk about it in detail tonight, but Becca can give some updates on, on where the budget's at. And then we can have some more information at the next meeting. But, yeah, we're not, we're not, we're not struggling right now by any means.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not saying that we shouldn't pay these guys more. I just want to make sure that we can afford to pay them.
Absolutely. And, and that's what, you know, after Hutch presents all the information, then it'll be up to he and I to come back, go back and look at what we would make, see as a reasonable recommendation to council. And then we would ask council to commit to that because this is something that we, it's not necessarily in the budget in that line item, but it would be something if we commit to, the council would need to make that a priority in the 22, 2022 budget to make sure it's there. And then you've got to trust from, from me and from City Hall that, that we have the funds to cover it.
Good questions. And is the sales tax, Mayor, you say the sales tax is, has grown? Is that because of the, most people buying online during COVID? And that's the point of destination?
Yeah, I can't, I can't pinpoint exactly where that comes from. So anything I say would be anecdotal. But I would imagine, you know, online, at-home shopping is up. And if somebody buys something on Amazon as opposed to a Walmart, Tenino gets the sales tax revenue. A lot of our businesses have reported banner years. A lot of them, you know, the, the supermarket alone has, has made a tremendous amount of money because people are shopping local because they weren't going to Olympia. And then we've got new businesses popping up that are, that are successful businesses. So, so the prop, the, the sales tax revenue is good, but the sales tax revenue is a small portion of what we do. But property tax revenue is up too.
Not very good. Same with the new legislation that went into effect at midnight, the 25th of January, or July, rather, Sunday morning at midnight. The, the legislation is exceedingly heavy on, and emphasizes hiring, training, and supervision for police officers. You must have the training, you must have supervision, and the supervisor needs to respond to almost every type of call. Very heavy on the, on the supervision. Let me see. So that's, that was a good question, Councilmember O'Callahan. Thanks, please, there we go. This is what needs to be determined if we're going to alter the application. And I'll be naming the interview panel. I'll be soliciting folks and getting them named and assigned to the panel. Not knowing exactly what the date's going to be yet. There'll be a site selection, might be the school, it might be somewhere at the school. I don't know, we'll figure that out. Salary determination, and then announcement. As soon as the announcement goes out, recruitment begins, and then the selection made. Very self-explanatory and very simplistic. Let me ask, or solicit now, council, do you have any questions about the hiring process or what we've discussed thus far? Should I take that as a sign of awe? Okay. I added a couple of pages in your handout. I'm not going to go through those. But the, the legislation has really changed how law enforcement responds to certain calls. For example, part of the law enforcement job has been devoted to community caretaking, noise complaint, barking dogs, or mentally ill, suicidal subject. And those are not crimes now. And police are not supposed to respond to those crimes or to those, those calls because they're not crimes. So I've met a few times with all the chiefs and the sheriff in the county, and with dispatch, and how are they going to dispatch these things? And how are we going to code these things as resolved calls? And it's a big brain shift for, for the law enforcement community. But we still are going to focus on serious crime and violent crime and continue our long tradition of community engagement. This does not mean we can't talk to the public. For example, if you're walking down the street and I said, hi, how are you? We can do that. And that's not a show of force, and you can reply, and we can have a social interaction. But if I say, hey, can you come here for a minute? That, legislators have said that's a use of force. Because now if I ask you, come here, that means you're, you're being detained legally, and you're not free to leave. And so it, it really has changed the way we speak to people and what circumstances and how we address it. But we're going to have to find new ways to address low-level nuisance-type crimes. And, but we're going to look to establishing some type of a crisis response. We have a relationship with the BHO, Thurston Mason Behavioral Health Administration Services Organization, the TMBH ASO, and Olympic Health Recovery Systems. They're up in Lacey, but they're the, the managed care and mental health folks that will respond with DMHPs, should an officer call. And Sergeant Seth Sharp put out today information of the officers with the phone number, the crisis lines that the officers probably should have had to begin with, and they may have. So we can call folks in and help fire. But a call came out over the weekend, I think it was Sunday, of someone suffering a mental health crisis. And we're not supposed to respond to those types of calls. And typically, we would respond, render the scene static and safe, and then call medics in or call for a DMHP, a designated mental health professional to handle the call. And either voluntarily or involuntarily, depending on the severity, get someone to some mental health treatment at the hospital. But that's changed now. Fire is the first ones in. And we don't even stay, we're not supposed to even go. So what we're going to probably do is if the medics are fired, if they're handling someone that's very combative, we probably still won't go. Combative is different than assaultive. If fire or medics get assaulted, we will be there to crime now. But there's a really fine line between combative and assaultive. So I might reckon we're going to be in the area anyway. So the call that came out on Sunday, medics were on the way, or fire was on the way. And one of our officers said, I'm a block, tells dispatch, I'm a block away. I'm staging for fire, waiting. So we have to create new ways to do this, but still be in compliance with the law. Because many of these laws don't say should or might ought to, or we suggest. It says you shall or you shall not, you will or you will not respond to these crimes. Getting the police out of the noncriminal business. And then, of course, there are other legislation that focuses on use of force and tactics and even pursuits. And I can go into more detail if you wish, but I'd prefer not to only because I'm afraid I'm going to give all the bad guys license to do what they want to do. No, he won't respond. But we have, I have all those legislations, legislation from 2021 ready to go. If you'd like to see any of those, I'm happy to share them with you. And so when, when an officer clears a call, it's cleared as information only, or it's cleared, thank you, Becca, or it's cleared as a report, cleared with an arrest, cleared with a referral, clear whatever. But now we're, dispatch is, is creating a new code of ledge 21. That means legislation 21. Because the legislation from 2021, we're clearing this call with no report, no, no arrest, no whatever it is, or no even response. That still means, it still gives the officer the opportunity to make a phone contact with the individual. And one of the first calls, if it's, if it's a low-level crime like a shoplift, question will be, would you like to prosecute? And if you don't want to prosecute, law enforcement will not be involved. If you want to prosecute, then we will get involved. But it won't be an arrest, it's going to be probably a referral. And there's, there's several nuances to these, about five or five, six different legislation pieces that passed. So with that, are there any, any questions?
Anybody else? Nobody? This is probably the worst piece of garbage legislation that I've ever seen come out of the state of Washington. And I've been here since 96. My commissioners meeting for the fire commissioners, this was brought up a little bit. And I basically said, what the heck? Because everybody's saying, well, we try, need to come up with ways to try to work within this system. There's no working in this system. We got fire, we got police that are going to get hurt because of this stupid stuff. What we're trying to do by saying, well, we're going to try to work with system, is to take a, take a rock and turn it into a piece of candy. It's not going to work. I'm a little bit emotional about this. I don't want to see any of my people hurt, my police, my firemen. That's what's going to happen. I can guarantee it. Because of the work that I do at night, I know what's going to happen. Sorry, Chief.
Don't apologize, please. And I tell you, your officers and the officers and the chiefs and command staff from other agencies publicly are very, very professional about it. And your officers are very professional about it. But behind closed doors, we hear the, and we espouse the same, the same feelings and the same opinion of this. And I'm, I'm number seven of nine kids. And if I did something wrong, well, I got, I got yarded in by mom or dad. It was, you know, I was held accountable. But not everybody got spanked. If I had an older sibling that mouthed off or did something stupid, they got in trouble and we just laughed. But we didn't get in trouble. But so you have several police officers nationally that do something so egregious, everybody gets punished. And I think ultimately, it's not so much the police are getting punished, it's going to impact our community and our citizens to the point where I regret to say it, but someone, some people are going to get killed because of a lack of police response, because of the legislation. At some point, if we're trying to stop someone for speeding and they want to flee, we're not going to chase them. Could it be a DUI? Yeah, could be, but we don't know. Because the law, the legislation says, and I'll just make this brief. We've got, you have a few minutes. There's a difference between reasonable suspicion and probable cause. I might see you weaving down the street, and I might think, oh, maybe, maybe you're intoxicated. But it could be a equipment malfunction in the car. It could be you're sleepy, could be, we don't know. Or just inattention. It could, you could maybe come through with Jack in the Box and, in another city. And the, the person handing you a meal sees you drinking and acting buzz. They would call the police, hey, this guy's drinking and driving. It might be a DUI. Well, that doesn't mean I have cause to arrest you, but I have a reasonable suspicion that you might be impaired. So under that reasonable suspicion, I can pull you over, observe the objective signs of intoxication, give you a few tests to see, and just kind of gauge where you are, even the eyes, then again, get case and stagmas test. And I'm either letting you go, or I have built probable cause to arrest. So reasonable suspicion is a hunter, gut feeling. Probable cause is, I am going to arrest you now. I have probable cause to believe you committed a crime right now or committing a crime. The new legislation says, we can't stop you unless we have probable cause. We will not be stopping anybody for reasonable suspicion. That's dangerous because someone might get hosed, including the driver. And so there are some contradictions, there are several contradictions in the legislations as well as to uses of force and terms that are used that aren't defined by the legislators. But rest, rest assured, the Attorney General will be addressing all these contradictions and filling these definitions by July of 2022.
Hopefully, by then, this is gone. This was a ridiculous piece of legislation. Lots of people are going to get hurt. Speeders are, because police aren't allowed to chase anybody anymore. If you're on the highway and you're doing 80 in a 60, they, unless you're weaving, and like you said, you got probable cause, they can't stop you. If, this is just really, really bad. What I, what I brought up at our commissioners meeting is that we don't need to find out ways to make this work. We need to get rid of it and go back to the way it was. What I see this legislation is doing over the last three years, this legislation is just step one to make it harder and easier to say that an officer did something wrong, to throw them in jail. That's what I see this legislation doing. Never mind all the people that are going to get hurt by it. Police is, a police and fire are there to protect and serve. They're taking the service part out and making it difficult to protect.
Well, I was going there next, and that is the CJTC is, is charged with, with some of that, that if, if an officer is involved in something that's noncriminal and there's a use of force, the officer can be, can be criminally charged. And once he or she is convicted, if they are, then they're decertified from being a police officer anywhere in the country.
So, so now what you're saying is that if somebody's going 80 or 90 or 100 miles an hour down the freeway, the State Patrol cannot pull them over? Is that what you're saying?
Well, at that point, they can get pulled over.
But if they run, they can't chase them. Is that right?
Yep.
Per the legislation. But the Washington State Patrol will have their own policies in place as well. And I don't know what the policy says. But if they're, I mean, they're committing a crime, and that's reckless driving at that point. So they have reasonable, they have probable cause to arrest someone for reckless driving.
Right, okay.
It's just that fine line.
Because if they're doing the speed, but they're, but they're staying within their lane and not weaving all over the place, is that really reckless driving? Just because they're doing 80 miles an hour? See the difference? Yeah, you would think.
It's reckless driving if you're driving 80 miles.
Reckless going 80 miles an hour.
Yeah, in our logical mindset, that's, that's illegal. But when you get to the courts, knowing the way the courts are lately, the way that they're treating our police, that's not a logical assumption anymore.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate everything you're saying, John. And I, I agree with a lot of what you say. I want to point out, there was a report that WASPIC put out just recently. Report shows that in 2020, murders were up 47% and have increased overall murders, 67% since 2016. That's not normal statistics. Manslaughter up 100%. Fraud increased by 131%. The total number of commissioned officers statewide was down from 1.24 per thousand to 1.19 per thousand. Washington is ranked 51st out of 50 states and Washington, and DC for the number of officers per thousand. So we are the worst state for officers per thousand. Reported cases of officers assaulted up 6% in 2020 and increased 67% since 2016. That's pretty striking. There were 302 murders in 2020. That is an increase of 46% compared with 206 murders in 2019. That
It's significant.
That's significant. And I don't think that this, you know, I think that maybe there's some people well-intended. And, you know, there's nothing wrong with accountability and reform, but I, yeah, I have, I have issues with the way this is rolled out, big time. So this, this was.
That there's going to be a lot of amendments to this law in the next session.
Oh, this is going to be the hot topic for years to come. But when you dig a big hole, you know, and then you spend a couple of years filling, I mean, things, things have fundamentally changed for law enforcement all around. And we're all going to be scrambling to figure out what that means and how we respond to that. And, you know, you can't, you know, I, we have to follow the rules that are laid out. And, you know, Chief Hutchings doesn't, he understands that very well. You know, it's not like, you know, the, the, all the sheriffs in Washington have got, got together, whatever, last weekend and signed something saying that, well, they're going to follow their interpretation of the Constitution. We don't interpret the rules. We are not the judiciary. That's not our job. We have to follow what the judiciary says. That's following the Constitution. And, and Hutch, I, he understands that very well. And I, I respect his interpretation of all this considerably.
Well, when I met with the chiefs and the sheriff, the few times we did, the prosecutor was there and a deputy prosecutor, and all the different, various cities attorneys were there. And none of, no, you shouldn't say none. Many of them could not even agree on the interpretation themselves. So one of the things that we're going to be really challenged in getting a chief, a police chief, is this is not the crappiest time to be the lead of any law enforcement organization. Because like you said, the supervision is, is the big focus of legislation, focusing on the supervisor's actions and advice of the officers. And so many men and women will still are stepping up to the challenge as, as we are in, in Tenino and our officers are. We took an oath, and that means something to us, doggone it. And so that's why we've got to really attract them, if we can, with salary.
So that brings us back. We're going to have to revisit the salary schedule for the Police Chief. And I, I think that Hutch has done a good job presenting the information and presenting a case for why, what exactly that's going to look like. You can look forward to us crafting something together for you guys and then for you guys to consider. Does that sound okay?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much, Council.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Always happy to be here.
All right, that gives us 30 seconds for recess. Recession's over. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the July 27, 2021 Tenino City Council Meeting. I'd like to say that all council members are present. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
One nation.
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have an agenda before us needing approval.
I moved.
Second.
I'm moving second to approve the agenda as presented. It's moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to approval of minutes.
I'm moved.
And seconded to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting, seven thirteen, twenty twenty one. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Motion passes. That brings us to the consent calendar. This is the consent calendar consisting of July fourteenth, twenty twenty one. From July twenty seventh, twenty twenty one. Payroll EFTs in the amount of twenty two thousand, six hundred and twenty four dollars and fifty three cents. Claims checks number three zero zero two one through three zero zero four six. And EFTs in the amount of twenty seven thousand, six hundred and sixty four dollars and thirteen cents. For a grand total of fifty thousand, two hundred and eighty eight dollars and sixty six cents. Along with liquor and cannabis license applications renewals from High Supply LLC, Nine Dragons Project LLC and Whitewood Cider.
Oh, pro. Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Do we have any discussion on the consent calendar?
Just real quick so that it's on, it's on tape. We've talked to for the.
There's no tape. This is all digital.
Digital, whatever you want to call it.
There are no tapes rolling, John. It's not nineteen eighty seven.
Everybody that's looking for a liquor license have been, have been talked to by the police department, correct?
Um, what, 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 where, where are you going with this?
We, we usually have the, when somebody's looking for liquor licenses. The police chief usually goes down there and gives them, just talks to them real quick, make sure that, that everything's okay.
Okay. There's a, there's a line on the signature thing. If the police department has any objection. And that's, that's presented and there is no objection. The one for Whitewood Cider, they've been, they've been operating here for, I don't know, six, seven months already. I don't know where High Supply and Nine Dragons Project are, but I imagine that's at the. The cannabis place over by Public Works. So.
Yeah, I just wanted to have it so that if somebody rolls back on this, that they can see that we went through the process properly.
Okay, gotcha. All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Consent calendar passes. Thank you. That brings us to executive session. We have presentations. We had one during the work session. We have no. That brings us to public comment. If there's anyone in the public that would like to provide comment, please. Step forward at this time, state your name and address. You'll be given three minutes to address the council. Going once, going twice, moving on. Public hearing, we have none proclamations. That brings us to old business. And this is more of a housekeeping issue than anything. But if we pull up, we're not looking for any. We don't, we don't need council action. We just want to make sure that everyone is aware. There is an amendment to the contract that's been approved that adjusts some of the scope of work. And it places, and it's just the same pot of funds, but it shifts twelve thousand more into. The, the payment for Gibson Olson. So because of the. Because of some of the hiccups with getting the bid through and the length of time. It's, there's been additional work that Gibson Olson is having to do to get this project going. So are there any questions about this or concerns? Okay, moving on. That brings us to new business. This is, this is fun stuff. We have facade grant applicants. So we've had several applications. The facade group has met and they have, they're making a recommendation to city council. So. I'll turn it over to council member Godovac, who is the chair of the facade grant review committee.
I feel really good about this. The, I'm going to start with. Whiskey River LS LLC as Chris Hallett and the building next to Landmark Tavern. They put in new windows and they are painting the, the facade of the building. And then the old Tenino Vault, the old Tenino Bank with Stephen Sharon Thornley, they pressure washed and repainted the trim. On that building. Jay Johnson, that really does. Jay Johnson and the Kodiak Room, they pressure washed the building. Western Supply LLC, Bob Patterson is going to paint the outside of the building. From the whole, not from the old hotel, he's painting the old hotel also. To the side of the building facing Sussex and the front of the store. And I, someone said it's going to be blue. And Whitewood Cider, Heather Ringwood and David White are painting the front of the building and the side facing Sussex. An apple red and there will be a hand painted sign on the front of the building. And they're also going to paint the container to mimic a railroad car. And I think it's all going to look really nice when we get there. My next, my next challenge for the facade improvement grant program next year is going to be to try to contact somebody. At the Masonic Hall and see if I can't get something done with the front of that building. So that's my report.
Awesome. This program has, has been pretty transformative. It's not a lot of money. But it, 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 you know, it puts a carrot out to motivate the, the shop owners. To get out and maintain and do something. And I, I love that instead of us going and being punitive. Through, you know, code enforcement and harping on people about signage and stuff, we're, we're. Encouraging them and helping them get to where we want them to be. And, and it's been, it's been great for downtown and it's not a lot of money. It's pretty cool. So, and, and Linda, thank you very much for your leadership on this. It's, it's, it's great.
You're very welcome. I've really loved it.
So is there a, a motion to accept the facade improvement grant review committee's recommendations for funding? It's been moved and seconded to approve the recommendations for the facade improvement grant. Is there any discussion?
Thank you for all the hard work, Linda. Appreciate it.
Welcome.
Thank you, Linda.
Thanks, Jason.
All right, hearing no further discussion. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. That's great. Resolution twenty twenty one dash zero five.
First paragraph, last line, please.
Yep, this is the resolution of the city of Tenino, Washington, declaring certain city vehicles to be surplus. And of no further use to the city and authorizing the sale and disposition thereof. The city is authorized pursuant to Washington. So this is within Public Works. We have a nineteen ninety six Ford F two fifty. And there's another vehicle too, right?
Just the one.
Just the one. Okay. The mayor of the city of Tenino, Washington shall be hereby authorized to sell said vehicle in a commercially reasonable manner. As determined by the mayor or his designee. Adopted by the city council, the city of Tenino, Washington, approved by its mayor at a regularly scheduled open public meeting. There of this day in twenty twenty one. Is, we have a motion?
I'm moved.
We have a second?
Second.
All right, is there any discussion?
Did we do one for the police car that's sitting over there by the service center? I don't remember.
Sitting over there by the service center?
By Giddy Up, Giddy Up Coffee Shop and whatever that's titled. The service center. You bring a car, you get it fixed.
The Crown Vic sitting there?
Yeah, I don't remember if we did surplus on that or not.
We have not, we haven't even addressed that yet.
Okay.
All right. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Those opposed? Motion passes. Sell the truck. All right, that brings us to reports. Chamber of Commerce, Mr. Sharp.
Hello, Mayor and council members. The chamber partnered with several folks to put on Oregon Trail Days last, this last weekend. We believe that we had record crowds on Friday, Saturday and Sunday compared to years past. We had sixty four people in the parade or entries into parade, which one of the highest number of entries in the parade as well. And the vendors all reported that they were satisfied and were happy with how it worked. We moved the Rockin' Gym Show from the school up to the quarry house. So thank you for allowing the use of the quarry house. And they loved it so much that they want to make sure that they come back there. So we're looking at how that's going to work. And we have a wrap up meeting on next Monday, August second at five thirty. To have all the people come together and talk about what went really well, what could have gotten better? Is there anything we should stop doing? Anything we should start doing? Who else should we be partnering with and what other resources do we need to be successful for next year? And we're looking forward to that as well. We did have the chamber lunch last week and we announced that Pat Howler was the. Grand marshal and Chris Howlett was the citizen of the year. And thank you Dan for putting those in the paper for the last two weeks. Appreciate that and the coverage of it. Our next meeting will be the third Wednesday of, of August. And that one will have the new visitor and convention bureau director and that fits. Come and give an update on what and how tourism is working for Thurston County and how Tenino can benefit from that. In September, we're going to do an evening function and we invite everybody to attend that to do a business social meeting. And that'll be somewhere around five thirty six in the Kodiak Room. And then on October, I want to put on everybody's calendar that we're going to have a meet the candidates lunch forum. So we invite all city councilmen, members who are running for office and then also the court commissioner races to be there. So those are the next upcoming things that we're working on.
The fire, the farmer's market reported that nearly three thousand people came through the market on Saturday. All around positive reports from the whole weekend, George.
Well, Sunday, Sunday I went up to see the Year of Frog and Toad. And I have never seen that many people still in the park. On Sunday afternoon after two and after. When I left there at four, four thirty, there was still. I, I almost had to park out in the middle of the street. It was, there were that many people. So.
Yeah, that, that frog and toad thing was an absolute success. The young eater is, they have been, they, you know, they're just, they're, you know, they're in love with everything going on right now. This is. It was, it was a great show for them and they had a tremendous amount of attendance. The quarry pool worked out really well. So it was, it was pretty cool. I hope everybody got a chance to go check it out. Economic Development Council.
If we can step back one, just one second, I want to bring up one, what I think is an important point. I was extremely impressed. The Tenino Wooden Dollars almost hit the ten thousand dollar mark. We were two hundred dollars short. Have we caught up on that, George?
Yeah, we're over that mark now, John.
Perfect, beauty. Thank you.
And we have people buying it on the internet from across the United States, so.
Awesome. Well done. EDC, there's no meeting tomorrow. Is there anything else to report, George?
Just want to thank everybody who went to our function last week. It was called Hoot and Nanny. They had two hundred and sixty people come and. We got to do courage awards and give words to businesses and nonprofits that worked through the pandemic to help still serve our communities.
I, I, I missed it. I was at work, but I heard it was a lot of fun and a lot of people have been talking about John Borden. So they had a dunk tank and a number of people were in the dunk tank. And John Borden went out and he got out like a can of spray paint. And he measured out like a major, the distance for a major league pitching mound. And he spray painted a box and then he got in the tank and he said that anybody could, that could. Hit him from the, the actual pitcher's mound would win a bottle of whiskey. And Commissioner, former Sheriff Gary Edwards, you know, and he, he's not a young spring chicken. He went out and he tossed a ball from, from what would be a normal pitcher's mound and knocked John in and got a bottle of whiskey. I thought that was pretty cool.
To, to, to clarify that though, Mayor, the, Mr. Edwards was extremely tenacious on that. And he kept buying more balls and more balls and more balls. And he spent thirty dollars. It was five bucks a ball or five dollars for three balls, I think, but he spent thirty dollars to nail the dunking. So, but he never gave up.
First try, but he got it.
That's hilarious.
He was probably still sore. VCB, no report. Fire District Twelve, do you have a report?
A little bit, one, our, one, our former, our former chair, Russ Dremel, his. He had somebody pass in his family. So I ended up running the commissioners meeting. Otherwise, we had the open house. I don't know how that, how that worked out. I'm hoping that it went very well. The reason I wasn't there is because I had a wedding that I had to attend. But everything seems to be going all along well. All the paperwork for some of the new hires is taken care of. And we're just moving right along. During the parade. They thought about giving out about forty of the flyers. When it was all said and done, I had them do about two hundred and fifty and every one of those went out too.
Library. Nope, museum.
They had the Pioneer Days, so there wasn't really a meeting meeting.
Yeah, so the Pioneer Village is amazing. It gets better and better. I guess. There's, there's a community up north that has, you know, those, when, when those, those people in the buckskin come, it's called a rendezvous. So Oregon Trail Days is a rendezvous and they have their competitive black shoot, black powder shooting. And there was a community up north that allegedly they got a mayor that is a little, was a little more bougie. And he wanted to cancel their black powder shoot for the year and start doing like wine tastings. So this community up north irritated all their black powder shooters. And so we got a, we got a whole influx of. Ones from like the Cascadia Rendezvous. And they're going to go back and hopefully get some of their folks to start coming to our Oregon Trail Days rendezvous from now on. So that, that, that was a nice addition. You would have seen them camped out in front of the museum. And the museum did an excellent job. Jessica is doing fantastic. She was dressed all in some like pioneer dress at the Oregon Trail Days. And Rich Edwards, our historian, was giving tours by wagon throughout the town, history tours and telling people. All about, you know, the history of Tenino. And you could go through, you could make candles, you could split cedar shakes, you could scrape up. Skin off logs, you could make nails with a blacksmith. You could, it was, it was really, really cool. That's probably my, my favorite part of Oregon Trail Days now is, is how that has just grown and grown around the museum. So the museum had a great day.
Well, Bob Hall, Bob Hall has done a fabulous job, putting that together. And keep in mind, keep in mind, everybody, that there's a lot of volunteer opportunities for people. On Pioneer Days. I spent Friday up there and it was, it was fascinating. It really is.
It's very cool.
It's actually Bob Hill and, and he had over seventy volunteers this time in thirty five stations. And we owe a lot to the effort that he takes to make that happen.
Yeah, and families love that stuff. They're walking around with those corn husk dolls. And they've got, you know, they're making rope and it's, it's really neat. It's really neat. We should be very proud of our museum. Tenino Community Service Center, they were well represented in the parade. I, you know, just in the last year, they've, 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 they've come along very far. They've responded to the community's needs greatly. And it was really neat to see their entire fleet. In the, in the parade. And, you know, they got a new van, they got a new reefer truck, they got a. It's, it's, they've done a great job. They were well represented.
Mayor, I have to say something about this.
Oh, there you are. I didn't even know you were on. Good. Give your report, please, Jody.
I, um, so, uh, all of the ladies that volunteer. At the food bank wound up having to drive. Um, the rigs mostly because our male drivers. Are all incapacitated at this point for one reason or another. It just was crazy. So. We just said, well, since we're the ones.
Driving friends?
Uh, no, Dave was at the race and so he was not there. And it, it just was, at first I said, oh no, we're not doing this. You guys are going to put your big girl panties on and we're doing it. And so, we just did. I mean, it's not that I haven't driven all of the rigs in myself, but you know, some of the ladies are, are older and they haven't really done a whole lot of that. But a good time was had by all. Pat Howler's kids, well, her grandson, his wife, her great-grandson and her granddaughter came from Texas to be with her. And they had a blast at the museum. So, that was, that was really very nice to hear from somebody outside of the community, how much they thoroughly enjoyed that. On a side note for, or outside of, of the festivities this last weekend, we will be having a COVID vaccination in Buquota Wednesday, July twenty-eighth, three to seven. They are going to be back again in about three weeks. They were at the, at the park this last weekend on Saturday only. They did between, I can't remember the exact number between seventeen or fifteen and seventeen, something like that. And so, and they're getting people to actually pre-sign up to get these done. And so, there you have it. So, they're going to be in Buquota this Wednesday. They will give out the Pfizer either one or two, depending on what's needed. And we can go from, we can go from there. On this, on the other note, with the health department, we are working with them to try and, and start getting some of their health vans to come in to set up both in Tenino and Buquota to get folks through there and check their blood pressure, all that rest of that happy stuff. And possibly the mammogram bus to come in and that kind of thing. I'm working with a number of those entities to see if we can get that done.
Thank, thank you for what you did up there, Jody. Everything turned out really well. Thank you for your service.
Oh, you know, the ladies just had a ball because they saw people, you know, all the ladies at the food bank have been here forever. And so, they have seen so many people, they saw so many people at the, at the park. And, you know, they're looking at great-grandkids with some of these kids that are coming through. And, or, or, you know, Mrs. Landers, if nobody knows this, she works at the food bank and was for many years the secretary at the middle school. So, that woman knows everyone.
Yes, she does.
And she remembers certain things about everyone.
Not me.
Mayor.
I was in her office a lot.
I think all three. So, anyway, it, it was, they really had a joyous time. And so, that's a good thing for, for us because we don't have a whole lot of volunteers. And when we do get somebody to call for volunteers, we have a specific place we're going to need them. Like right now, I really need people on Tuesday to help deliver food to the, to the senior shut-ins. But you're going to have to be able to pick up a thirty-two pound box and hoof it upstairs. And so, some of our volunteers that want to come in and volunteer can't do that. So, then I have to kind of turn them away because I don't have any place to put them. But because, and the other reason too is we don't have the high school kids anymore. The high school kids do not do any volunteer work, I guess.
Clint, the superintendent, I met with the superintendent and he said they're going to reinstit- reinstitute their, kind of their program for public service for the kids, like a, like a volunteer requirement.
That would be awesome because I can, you know, we can use them once a month, just once a month if they could, if they could do the senior commodities for the senior apartments. Just that alone would loosen up some stuff with my other guys who are, they're retired and, or, or they're on disability for a whole lot of different reasons. So, that, you know, they either got a bad hip, a bad knee, a bad back or something. And hoofing that amount of groceries up to these people is, you know, is something.
All right. All right, thank you, Jody.
Yeah, thanks.
Arch Commission.
We're putting that on hold till September.
Okay, Civil Service, the SOD Improvement Grant Review Committee, we talked about that already. There's nothing else on that. Linda?
No, not at this time.
Chief of Police, we heard from him. Just want to make mention that Public Works and the Police Department worked very well together this weekend, doing a lot of stuff that they're not usually doing. So, they, they all went above and beyond managing the parade, managing people, making sure the park was clean. We did a big cleanup today afterwards that OTD and the music festival did a good job cleaning up after themselves, but there's always, you know, more trash. So, Public Works went through and did a good job, you know, cleaning things up. It just, it, it, it all went really well. From the Public Works Department, septic receiving, there's, they've had, they're having to add, it's almost, almost there apparently, this like three-way valve in there where they can redirect the flow of the effluent before we can start going on there. Department of Ecology asked, so when, once we're up and running, we anticipate bringing in like twenty thousand gallons a day of product out of these septic trucks. But that's just, that's mostly water. That's not solids. So, Department of Ecology said they're, they're concerned with our intake and our lagoons and, you know, how much capacity we have. Their question to us is, hey, can you calculate how much that will mean in actual solids? And, you know, Troy did the work and after decanting, taking the water out, out of the twenty thousand gallons, it's like one gallon a day of actual solid waste. So, those are good numbers and that, that's very good for us. Because it comes down to a calculation of, you know, how much does it cost to haul it off versus how much we make in bringing it in? And, you know, is, is it, is it worth it? And our numbers are still saying, yes, it's worth it. No update on the park toys. They told us second week of August, that's what we're anticipating for the parts and for the contractors. You can expect to see the parking lot behind Sandstone Cafe and that whole block. Work to begin there around the first week of August. A lot of that's going to be done by us, by Public Works, the demolition, the, the, the site prep, cutting out where the swales will go, those kinds of things, getting it ready. And then we will be contracting out for the, the asphalt and some of the other things to be put in. But expect to be some work being done there. Shutdown of that parking lot while working on it is, is going to have some impact downtown. But that's just, that's just a pain that we're going to have to go through while we're doing it. That's it for Public Works. City Planner, Building Official, City Attorney, City Clerk Treasurer, that's you, Becca.
I just have a quick budget update. Things are looking good so far this year, like Wayne said. Tax revenue, license revenue and permits is all up. We're about right where we should be on expenditures, so things are looking good. We're sitting around the forty-five to fifty-five percent rate in most categories on expenditures. And then, like he said, revenues are higher than projected, so. Just a quick update of things are looking good. We're moving forward well and making some good decisions on spending. That's all I have.
Thank you, Becca. And I'm just going to throw you, throw it out there. And I'm not, I don't want to embarrass you and I know that, you know, it is, it is a hard subject, but this is going to be Becca's last council meeting. She's been doing a great job. We're, you know, we're not happy about this at the city, but we're happy for her because she's, she's, you know, she's moving on to something that she's really wanted to do for a long time. So, she's, she's taken a job working with the finance department at the city that we stole her from. So, they've stole her back and, and that's okay. There's no hard feelings. We're, we're sad to see her go, but we're very happy for her. And, and, and we have, we have some plans that we're, we're rolling out there to, to put into place to move forward because we got a, we got a city to run. So, that's it. Becca, you got any, any comments? Council have anything for Becca? Last time you let me see her.
Sorry, sorry to see you go, Becca, really.
Thank you. Like I told Wayne, it's not an easy decision. It certainly feels way too quick for, in my opinion as well, but this is what I had to do for my family and my kids and their transportation and school-wise, so.
Yeah, the logistics of kid movement and working sixty miles away, just, it, it doesn't work. And I, I understand and I get that. And, you know, yeah, it makes sense.
Thought I had a plan in place, but unfortunately it did not work out, so I am sorry to go.
Becca, what is your official last day?
Um, Friday. Well, it'll be the fifth technically, but in office will be Friday.
So, all right, you've done a great job. Thank you.
Thanks.
Mayor.
You got from Aberdeen that you came?
Yes.
Okay, wanted to double-check that.
Yep, yep. My report, so I met with the new superintendent. We had a really good meeting. I, I think he's going to do a great job. I think I, did I give this at the last council meeting? I think, I can't remember if I've met with him. I don't think so. One of the big concerns, you know, our, one major touch point for us is Police Department and our, our SRO service. By all reports from him, they're very happy with it. He kind of tipped his hat that he's very appreciative of how little we charge them for an SRO contract. So, you know, it's good. We have a good partnership with them. We're very, we're very happy that they appreciate the role that we play there and we want to keep moving that forward. Other than that, you know, he'll, he's going to come to a meeting at some point and introduce himself to all you guys. Attended mediation along with Rachel at a, a recent, what was that, Monday, Tuesday, something, last week, Friday? I don't even know. Everything runs together. Mediation with the Fire District went well. We will schedule it for the next meeting to discuss the, the outcomes and the, kind of the, where we got as far as negotiating a resolution with the attorney. And I think everybody's going to be happy with that and then we'll just put that to bed. Ag Park Funding, so we, we passed, you know, we passed the bond to find the rest of the money or to kind of put in the local money portion for the, the building. And then we immediately start, you know, looking to the, to the next building and we're, we're planning that out. And Aslan and the EDC, working with Pack Mountain Workforce, identified some funding. And they're filling out a grant for, that would bring in another like eight hundred thousand dollars. And so, we've kind of shifted from an additional building focus to adding another five thousand square feet to this building. So, this is exciting. This would kind of bring in the, because the money comes from a federal grant, that would bring in some money for specific things. That would be the food, the, the, the regional food hub would be relocated down here. A commercial kitchen for processing would be put in there. And then offices and classrooms for workforce development. And, and that's all very exciting. We're going to have, if that money comes through, we'll, we'll hear about it soon and we'll present that, what that means to you guys shortly. Talked about the clerk treasurer position. Public Works, we've had a vacancy for a maintenance worker position for the past year. We kind of hesitated on hiring for that because we were trying to decide on what, what kind of flavor of maintenance worker we wanted to look for. With, with Ben Barnes retirement, we lost a very important piece of our, our city and that's being able to do permitting and inspections in-house. And so, we had to, as everybody knows, we've had to farm that out to a, a private company. And that costs a lot. We lose a lot in permit fees. We lose that kind of home rule and that home flavor in, in being able to work with our, our businesses and developers. So, we set out to hire a maintenance worker that would have, that had a significant amount of a background in the building industry and the building trade. After, this is after talking to Ben about what it means to be an inspector and to be a building code official. And we have made an offer to somebody that has that experience. And we are going to look to send them to some training in Vancouver that's coming up in October where they would then be licensed to be a building inspector and code official and code enforcement officer. And at that point, that would be, that would be something that we handle in-house. And we would be, instead of giving away our permit revenue, we'd be keeping it in-house.
That is real good news.
Yeah, it's going to mean a lot for the city. It's going to mean a lot of, you know, additional revenue that we can capture. And just being able to be responsive to our, our businesses, our developers, our homeowners is, is going to be really important. So, that is the plan. We, we've, we have in the budget, the, the ability to pay the maintenance worker on that salary scale. And then in the 2022 budget, we will be trying to craft some, you know, a stipend program that would add an additional two hundred and fifty dollars a month for being the building inspector and two hundred and fifty dollars a month for being the code enforcement officer. But this person is going to have to be certified in these things and we're going to put a lot of pressure on this person to, to do this job and do it, do it right. So, there's, there's, this is the place where we want to grow in our, in our ability to provide this, this service. And, and so that's the direction we're, we're choosing to go. And, and, and it's exciting. It's, I think it's, I think it's going to be a, a new element to our Public Works Department that we've needed for a long time. We haven't really had somebody that's done that here really full-time for, I want to say about nine years, ten years. So, so that'll be good. That's all I have for my report. Any questions? Okay, that brings us to be that. Mr. Long. CIP. One thing that Becca didn't talk about was our, our IT system. You want to give an update on that?
So, I talked to our in-house IT, I guess they're not really in-house, right system that we contract with to provide all of our IT. It sounds like whatever happened with our email system, they've been unable to figure it out. And our domain owner is not able to be contacted, so we're going to have to basically recreate it all. So, right now, our website, everything is through a dot U.S. and it will be switched over. We're going to have to recreate it as, say, cityoftenino.gov. And in-house, it won't look a lot different. Our emails will obviously be a different email address. However, they're going to be able to transfer our history over, so we're not losing anything. So, it's seemingly going to be seamless, so they say, but we will see how it goes. It should be up and running hopefully by the end of this week.
Thank you. Solid Waste Advisory Board.
Nothing new to report.
Okay, steady.
Mayor, I'd like to do back two things. One is Oregon Trail Days. I want to recognize Jody because she stepped up to be our vendor chair this year. We did a partnership between the food bank and with the Chamber. And so, we split the money of the revenue of those. So, some of the money went to the food bank, some to that. And then also kudos to the chief who met with Nick on the Tenino Music Festival about four weeks ago, just to make sure that that was going to come off and do really well. So, chief really sat down, we went through a checklist and that all came out and it was a great concert. So, looking forward to working with Nicholas for 2022 on the Tenino Music Festival.
Absolutely. And you, you too, George. And I was, you, you were a big part in helping Nick, you know, make sure he, you know, crossed his Ts and dotted his Is. And, and he did. I mean, he really, really pulled it off. I think that a lot of people are going to have a lot of confidence in him next year. I think that a lot of people are gonna have a lot of confidence in him next year and you're gonna see that, that music festival grow. It was, it was a big success. He was very happy with the, with the way that it turned out. Uh, they, you know, they, they exceeded their expectations in ticket sales, there were no incidents. Uh, you know, it was, it was just all around, things went well. And, and thank you for that, George.
He's planning to come to our wrap-up meeting too, so he can be part of planning for the next year of, of, of Trail Days. Steady did not meet this month because we found out a lot of people were on vacation. And uh, so our next one will be the third Friday of August, but I'm gonna send out an early notice next week to find out if people are gonna be able to make it or not. And they'll probably have an update from the Center for Business and Innovation, what they're doing to serve the business community in South County.
All right, thank you, sir. Uh, Tenino School Board?
I just have uh, some summer announcements. Um, some of them have been um, on the calendar for a while, but the grab and go meals are still happening from eleven thirty to two. And one of the locations is here at the middle school. And I know that New Day Christian Center also um, has a location and then out in BuCota, but I'm not quite sure where in BuCota, I don't know if it's at the fire station, I'm not sure, but there's another location in BuCota. Um.
Jody can probably answer that.
Yeah, it's across the street from the um, community center, which is. Yes, downstairs, that fa- it's the, you know, two glass doors, whatever, that face the uh, the railroad trucks. So they are there, um, you know, eleven to whatever. They get their.
All right.
Possibly, they've been running out of food. This last week they ran out of food before twelve.
Wow, from just uh, high traffic or?
Yes, um, I don't know what the deal is. All I know is that we had a couple of clients that came over and said, um, by the way, we didn't get lunch over there because they ran out. I, and, and I really don't even know anything about how they're doing that. So I don't want to um, speak out of school um, for that. But um, yeah, this last week I do know that um, there were a couple of kids that uh, but, but then again, the food bank, it, we are a year-round, we year-round take care of the, with them, with the kids with the backpack program. So um, they just didn't get their hot dinner, their hot lunch or whatever it is that they get over there. So um, yeah, so I don't know, you might wanna check into that, I don't, I.
Yeah.
We don't know. I told the parents that they need to call the school district and find out what they can do.
All right.
All right, thank you. Um, yeah, so they're hiring for bus drivers still. So if you know anybody or um, if you guys would like to be a bus driver for the school district, they're still hiring. Um, they still have their summer office hours, they're gonna be Monday through Thursday from seven thirty to four. So if you need to contact the school for any reason or the district office, they're still open. Um, and like you guys said, the music festival uh, was a huge success. And the PTSA was also there serving um, the hamburgers and whatever they had in their vending. And uh, last I checked in, they made over two thousand dollars. So you have both of these sides working for the school district and it, it was a huge success, so that's pretty exciting.
Very cool, thank you, Councilmember Davidson. TRPC?
Yeah, um, so we, uh, this Monday had the second part of our retreat and it was awesome to be in person. I've never had an in-person meeting before, so that was really cool to meet everyone. Um, and then we looked at the missions and goals for the next two years, so that was cool to be a part of that, so.
Awesome.
And then we meet uh, in September.
Awesome, and you had a stage, onstage appearance at the concert, I hear?
Uh, for about twenty seconds, then my mom took over, but we, we were dressed as the Ninja Turtles, so.
Awesome. Uh, TPB?
Uh, we met, everything was going fine until the last presentation and I got to hear exactly what it was. At the end of their presentation, I asked them if they looked at a pres- at uh, a presentation that we gave and put together about twenty years ago. And uh, we actually got a national award for it because we were the first transportation policy board in the country that actually tried to reflect on where we were and where we were going. Well, they never read that. And everything that they put into this program, into this presentation was exactly the same stuff in the presentation that I was part of. And no different conclusions. And I brought that up and I was not very happy that they spent all that time without even looking to see about, about uh, that program that we did. But as far as building in Thurston County and the projections that they're seeing, the only thing that's really changing is our population is up a little bit more. And that's gonna drive different building. Uh, they keep seeing, they, they keep trying to beat the bandwagon that it is up to government to come up with affordable housing. Well, government throughout, throughout Thurston County has been slashing the uh, building requirements and all the fees on that stuff to try to make that happen. There isn't much more that we can do. Uh, but so, and that's becoming a problem for our areas, affordable housing.
Absolutely. All right, thank you, John.
Our next, thank you, our ne- our next meeting is September, we have next month off. Uh, if I can go back to TCOM nine-one-one real quick?
Absolutely.
Okay, uh, one of the things that we haven't projected on was the problem that we're having with our hospitals right now. They're, they're becoming really overflowing, they've had to add a whole lot of new hu- uh, new beds to take care of everybody that's coming in. But it's not people that are getting sick from uh, from COVID. It is the effects for the last year and a half of people not going to see their doctors because they didn't wanna have that test. You know, you go to your doctor, they make you take the test, yada, yada, yah. A lot of stuff wasn't being scheduled. Well, now it's being scheduled and they've got a overflow of people going to uh, the emergency center. It's slowly starting to ease its way back out and uh, and all the fire departments are doing whatever we can to help with that. But I wanted to bring that up, that the, that the hospital, oh, excuse me, that the hospitals we're having is not a staffing problem so much, but uh, an availability problem because of all the people that are starting to come in that weren't coming in during that timeframe.
Thanks, sir. That brings us to public comment period number two. If there's anyone in the audience that is a member of the public and would like to provide comment, now's your opportunity. You'll be given three minutes, state your name and your address. Hearing none? Moving on, that brings us to announcements.
Dun-dun, 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 dun-dun. Does that mean me? Okay, good.
That's all, it's the John O'Callahan hour.
Now I'm telling you, uh, as everybody knows, uh, I've got flyers and I'm gonna start getting them put out for the first responders potluck barbecue. Again, it's a free event, uh, almost free. We just ask everybody that shows up if they can bring a side dish, if they can't, that's fine. Uh, the Highlanders are gonna, the, the bagpipe group, they're gonna come down and play. We've got the DJ playing, we've got the pony rides. This is a, a completely free event, so bring the kids, tell everybody that you know and the flyers will be coming out shortly. I've already posted a few on Facebook, if you've seen it, please pass it on, get people to come down. Because this is basically just to say thank you to all the men and women of Thurston County that uh, are there when we're asleep, answer calls when we need help. That's what this is for. Uh, one other thing that I wanted to bring up real quick is at our last meeting, I had an idea. Uh, this is more of a, we, it's not a vote type deal, it's just to let you know what I'm doing. Uh, my idea was for the ag park, since we're, we're putting Tenino on the line for one point seven five million dollars, that they should reap the benefits. Uh, so I, and I'm just letting you guys know what I've been doing. I've already talked with a, a lawyer friend of mine, so that means it was free. I like free, doesn't cost us anything. And one of his suggestions was just to figure out if we can take uh, do a tax rebate. And so we're, I'm looking at that and a few other things. And one last thing, I'm hoping that, that the end of next month, that we can actually start meeting about homeless issues. I brought that up a couple, a couple of meetings ago. Uh, if we can, I already have a, a speaker on the subject. Uh, she's been dealing with homeless for, God, I think twenty-five years or so, it's her own business and it's who I work for. And I, I, this is, this is something that we're starting to see show up here in Tenino and people are starting to get on Facebook and, and arguing back and forth about it. I don't think it's something that we need to argue about, it's something that we need to look at and see how we can address it and address it in a humane fashion. Okay, I'm done.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that has an announcement? Okay, that moves us to adjournment.
Non-debatable.